The recording has started. Call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, could we rise to the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, minutes to consider an act upon the minutes of December 7th, 2020, and December 14th, 2020, and December 21st, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm going to ask for a motion to move item 11 COVID update up before item number four.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Lefkowitz asked to have Sands Clary answer some questions. I just want to start off by saying how incredibly proud I am of our Health Director Sands Clary and our entire Health Department for making Fairfield one of the first towns to have a COVID vaccine clinic up and running. Other towns have come to look at the way we have set up our clinic to emulate it, which is a tribute to our success. As of last week, they completed three clinics administering 1,200 vaccines. By the end of the week, they will have two more clinics and hopefully distribute another 900, which will be a total of 3,000. I want to emphasize for residents, the town can only vaccinate those listed in the Phase 1A category, which includes health professionals and first responders. This information is outlined in the state's website, and we have shared that in the last newsletter, how people can research where they fall in the Phase 1 and Phase 2. As a town, we are not able to provide vaccinations to anyone outside those parameters at this time. According to the Connecticut COVID website, the goal is for all residents of Connecticut to have access to the vaccine, although this will likely not occur until late spring or early summer. We are eager to provide the vaccine to elderly and those most vulnerable, but I want to be very clear, we cannot go against the state's directive. Once we are allowed to start vaccinating other priority groups, we will absolutely send that information on the newsletter and post it widely. I have invited Sands Clary, our Health Director, to join our meeting today to answer some questions that have come up from Selectwoman Lefkowitz with regard to COVID. And I shared the questions, Nancy, with Sands, and I'm going to turn it over to Sands with my deepest thanks and appreciation for his tremendous work over the past year.
Sure, thank you, First Selectwoman. The first question was just to describe the vaccine rollout plan, and Brenda did a great job of explaining that. But right, you know, we committed early to become a COVID vaccine provider, went through the numerous steps to become a provider, and were amongst the first to receive vaccine to begin.
Excuse me a minute, Sands. Could everyone use their phones? We're getting some feedback from someone's phone. Thank you.
And so, you know, on December 23rd, we had our first clinic. We did over 400 individuals. We've had two other clinics since then, with two additional scheduled this week. We are doing Phase 1A eligible individuals. We will continue to do that until the state directs us to add additional groups into that, and that will be depended on, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but just how much vaccine is available in the state, how much is directed to local health departments, and the, you know, it's just this timing of setting up the clinic dates and doing the first and the second dose of Phase 1A eligible individuals before we can move on to do later phases. But that's the plan. We will stick with what the state guidance gives us in terms of, you know, who we can vaccinate, but that's what we are sticking with right now, and our clinics are going well, and we will continue to do so.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about that? And I want to echo First Selectwoman's Kupchak's thanks and praise of the hard work, and just appreciative of your willingness to jump on this call. There's a lot of anxiety around this issue, as there has been, and I think people, many people eager to learn more about the vaccine, and I know that the First Selectwoman has provided updates, but, you know, hearing this now, that as of late December, what was that number, 1,500, you said?
So we've done 1,236 vaccinations today.
1,200. Okay. And can you just very quickly, so do people make, like, how does it work just again for edification? Like, do people make an appointment, and they come in, as long as they're an 1A individual? Do they make an appointment? Are you, yeah?
Phase 1A eligible individuals are uploaded into what's called the Vaccine Administration Management System by their employers. So their employers have to be approved by the state of Connecticut. Once they are approved, they get access to this VAM system, and then they upload their employees into the system, and once those employees are uploaded, they can see the clinics that are available in the area and sign up for whichever clinic they choose.
Got it. And then, and I understand you're following the guidelines from the state, but if you were a wizard and a forward, able to kind of predict the future, any sense of when Fairfield, late spring, summer, was a time that the Selectwoman, First Selectwoman just threw out? But any sense of the feasibility of that? Like, are you comfortable to say by summer or by the fall of next year, anyone that wants a vaccination will be able to have one?
Again, that's the information we have been provided, that we expect to be doing Phase 1A eligible individuals, first and second dose, and lead through the end of January. Then we will work through the other phases where it'll be, the groups become much larger, and the vaccine supply will still be limited for several months. We've been advised that sometime in potentially as early as June, that we, at that point, they would expect to be vaccine for the general public available. Now, so some of those other groups would be critical infrastructure workers that go on during the spring, critical infrastructure workers, people over 75, people 65, people with medical conditions, you know, and so those people will be vaccinated throughout that period, and we're waiting for guidance from the state to say when exactly we can open up our clinics to those individuals. But until, it is likely not going to happen until June, until, you know, anybody can show up to a clinic and get a vaccine, you know, so it's kind of, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to ask you a leading question finally on this, which is, you are, or are you sort of preparing in this early phase for what will happen down the line in June, let's say, when you are able to open wider in terms of making plans for what a bigger rollout would be, and probably, you know, a more overwhelming number of people coming or wanting to participate at once? Like, are you making preparations and plans for what that rollout would look like?
Yes. So, you know, we, two things are going to happen. So it, all of it is not going to fall on the local health department to vaccinate the general population of Fairfield.
Okay.
It's going to fall upon medical practices, existing walk-ins, pharmacies, everybody's going to be pulled into the process of vaccinating individuals. I don't even know quite how that will look come over the next few months exactly, you know, that those individuals that are eligible may not have to come to a local health department, may simply go to their own medical provider to get it. And so that is the approach that the state has consistently said, is that they will try to distribute this as widely as possible to make it accessible to the broader group of people, because, you know, health departments, you know, can vaccinate people, and we do, and we're good at it, but, you know, it's one thing to take on the entire community.
Yep. Much like the flu vaccine, for instance.
So I will give you an example. We are, each week, as we look at the clinic, we do, you know, quality improvement type of assessment of our clinics and say, how can we increase our throughput? And so we will continue to do that, to look at ways we can increase our throughput through, and to limit the burden on town employees necessarily by pulling in volunteers and doing regional clinics with other health departments. So we're exploring all those possibilities to ramp up to offer large-scale clinics for eligible individuals. And so those are all things that we're planning and approaches that the state is planning on, and it will be, you know, widely distributed. At the time when it becomes available to the general population, you know, it'll be widely distributed that lots of providers will have it.
And a lot of that was on the news I actually saw last night and over the weekend, that the federal government was talking about doctors being able to do it, and CBSs and pharmacies and things of that nature.
Yeah, and that's always been the plan. So Brenda, you were going to address some of the other issues there?
So vaccine rollout, access to testing, do you want to talk about that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So with the access to testing, so Fairfield has, you know, and the term I've used before is, is, testing is available, but it's kind of inconvenient right now in Fairfield. So most individuals that I talked to are able to find a testing location within a day or two. Outside of those peak periods, like before Thanksgiving, there was a peak in testing demand, but most people can find access to testing within the sites that exist in Fairfield. Regardless, Fairfield is exploring an agreement, and it takes some time to do this, with Yale to bring a drive-through testing facility to town. We are, you know, sort of mid-stage of that, of having people, you know, lawyers review contracts and, you know, reviewing building permit plans and things like that right now. But we are in the process of doing that, and so, and we are always looking at ways to increase testing capacity in town. And so, but it's one of those things that, you know, the town is not taking a lead role in doing that, not having our nurses collect testing. That's simply not something that we're planning on at this point, because we have, you know, several facilities within town and neighboring towns nearby that have access and have capacity to do additional testing.
So when you say mid-stage, any sense of what end stage, the timing there?
Yeah, it'd be hard to, it's hard for me to predict. So it just depends on how quickly we can execute an agreement, and that's really down to the legal folks between the town and Yale, and then the building permit process, and then the process of the construction contractor that Yale has hired to establish the site. And so, you know, a lot of these factors aren't up to us. And so, you know, they told us it would be anywhere from six to eight weeks, and we're probably, like I said, midway between that point right now.
Okay. All right. The six to eight week thing, that's, that's good info. Thank you.
So one of the questions, state encourages, suggests enforcement as an important tool to mask-wearing in group gatherings. It was written, understanding this is the Health Department purview, it's really actually not. The Health Department is only in charge of responding to facilities that they actually permit, so restaurants and hair salons and things of that nature. As far as gathering-
Which I would include in my question, by the way.
Right. So as far as gathering goes, our Health Department has responded to any complaint to a restaurant or any facility that someone said they saw something that they didn't think was appropriate, and our Health Department has gone on quite a few calls, as many of you are aware. We did shut down a local establishment for repeated violations. We have, our Health Department has trained local establishments on proper protocol, and we've, I think, been very successful. As far as enforcement goes about mask-wearing, we have chose, the town of Fairfield has chose, as I think all towns in the state of Connecticut, have chosen encouragement, education, PSAs, and that sort of avenue. We are not enforcing, we're not giving out tickets to people who don't have a mask on. That's not something our town is going to be doing. We've gotten through it this far. People generally, I'd say for the most part, wear masks, and most establishments don't allow you in if you do not have one on. So, can't hear me good with my mask on. So that's where we are with that. As far as gatherings, I do know Chief Lydi and Captain Calamores are on the line, I believe, for another item that is coming up. But, and if, I see you're there, Chief Lydi, if you want to speak to it. I do know that our law enforcement has responded to any complaint of a large gathering and has dispensed those immediately. There was one this weekend where they actually issued an infraction regarding a large gathering. So I know that our law enforcement has responded to every single complaint regarding a large gatherings and has taken appropriate action. And Chief Lydi, if you want to add on to that, I'll allow you if you wanted to.
Thank you, First Selectwoman. Yes, we entertained a number of calls, and like you indicated, did respond to a New Year's Eve party and issued an infraction over the weekend. It's not always an easy thing to accomplish, just because, you know, the executive orders call for specific numbers of, you know, 10 people unrelated in a dwelling, doesn't mean we can just run into the door and count the people. So there are Fourth Amendment issues that come into play that we have to take under consideration. And like you said, we do opt for encouragement and education before enforcement, but we don't shy away from enforcement when it's appropriate.
Is it public information with the, and thank you very much, Chief Lydi, is it public information what the specific enforcement is in the case? Or is it really dependent on the infraction and how severe and whatnot?
It's dependent on the infraction. I can tell you that most of the ones that we've issued so far are creating a public disturbance. The one this weekend was creating a public disturbance. The local establishment that we worked with, the Health Department, in shutting down was a different charge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And the next one, death toll included in nursing home data, was asked, could this be something that could be shared in town updates? It is included in the town update, but if-
Sure. So in every update that First Selectwoman puts out includes the number of deaths that have occurred in town, and then it also links to our data page, which includes a breakdown not only of cases by general population, nursing homes and universities, but it also includes a percentage, a pie chart of the percentage of deaths that happened in elder care facilities. So we're current of 179 deaths, which is likely to change in minutes if it hasn't already with the new state update, but of 179 deaths so far, 86.6 have occurred in elder care facilities, with 13.4 occurring in the general population. That's always on our website. It's always been there. It's never been taken down, and the deaths have always been included in the First Selectwoman's updates. So that is there. And, you know, one of the things that's different about Fairfield, so I saw some questions about concerns about the rates in Fairfield, and the difference is Fairfield, you know, is that we have more long-term care and assisted living facilities than most towns throughout Fairfield County. You know, we have seven facilities in town with nearly 1,000 beds in town. You know, that's more than Stamford, that's more than Norwalk, it's, you know, almost three, you know, it's almost four times the amount in Stratford. And so we just have a lot of beds, and so the impact on Fairfield is going to appear somewhat different. And we've provided to individuals asking that question over, you know, the past, sort of a quick look at that to say. And it's available, we're going to, I talked to my staff about putting the links to the state data right under those charts, because it's state data, it's available on the state data page, the links to what's going on in nursing homes, how many beds, how many assisted living. It's not the most convenient way to find it there. They have kind of a, not easy.
Yeah, and I think sometimes it's a function of just people not knowing where to look for the information, even, you know, spelling it out sometimes three, four, or five times, it's still at a loss to people where to find it, so.
Yeah. So, I mean, we tried to, in our data page, we tried to, it's a balance between providing a succinct summary that people with a quick look can understand the data and comprehend it and get what we're getting at, and that provides usual, I mean, really, it provides useful information for decision-making purposes. And, you know, and sometimes if we get too much in the weeds, we get a lot of questions about what is this trying to say, and so we have to balance that.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Sure.
So that is just the list of questions that you forwarded, Nancy.
I had one other, well, just a request really. In your conversations, Sands, and I know that you are connecting with universities regularly, and I appreciate that. Do you know if they ask their students to be part of the contact tracing program, the state-level contact tracing program, that app that many people have signed on for? Is that something, if they haven't, that they might consider asking of their students?
Yeah, I would have to specifically ask them that. This is the state app that does the contact tracing, notifies you. I don't think I've specifically asked them that. I'm pretty sure they probably have shared that, but I would have to, I would have to ask them specifically.
If it's something you'd like me to ask, you know, officially in writing as a request, I know that, you know, I'd be interested in, because that just feels like a really good data point and an app that is useful, but if you think otherwise, I defer to you, but.
Yeah. I mean, the effectiveness of that app really depends on a variety of factors. It really, it depends on people opting into it, both the, you know, the positive cases opting in to participate in that, and the, you know, the individuals who want to receive notifications opting in to receive notifications. And so, you know, if you have both those things going on, it provides some interesting data. If that's, but it's not comprehensive, because a lot of people, when you say, hey, do you want to be put into a system that tracks your movements and tells people around you that you're a positive case, to the general population, a lot of them say, yeah, no way, you know, I'm not interested in that. Even though the state contractors, contact tracers describe it to them as that it's de-identified and all that stuff, you know, there is some, you know, there's some resistance to that. So it's really, the system is only as good as what it is, is people opting in and people opting to be notified. You know, some people don't, there's some people out there that don't want to be notified if they're in close contact, you know, and so that's the struggle that we have, is the same thing with getting people to comply with the various quarantine and isolation requirements and mask-wearing requirements and stuff. It's the same struggle of getting people to comply with those.
And both universities also do contact tracing, and our Health Department does it for anybody who lives in the town of Fairfield.
Okay. Thank you for answering all my questions.
Is there, Tom, do you have any questions?
My apologies, I was on mute. I think I'm all good. They were all, they were all pretty well answered. So I appreciate it, and thank you for all the hard work to date. I do hope the vaccination process can be sped up for those that want it, and I appreciate you guys standing on top of it. So thank you.
Yeah, and really appreciate the thoughtful update. You know, with the new year, I think people are eager to hear if things have changed and what movement is. So, you know, personally, I appreciate it, and I know on behalf of the people in town, it's appreciated. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know the frustration, you know, I've received some emails from residents, you know, about their elderly parents at home, you know, that want to be vaccinated, and I understand that frustration. I have an elderly, vulnerable mother who lives with me, and, you know, it's just frustrating experience. I would wish our, you know, I'm hoping our federal government is, can work more closely with the state to get more of these vaccines out so that we can roll them out to more people as soon as possible. It's frustrating, but I think it's encouraging that we do have a vaccine so quickly, and I think it's something to look, to have, you know, a positive thought process about. And again, I'm very proud of our Health Department. They're working like crazy. Sands has, I don't think Sands has slept more than a few hours a night in the last several months. But I think we have a new year, and we should be thinking positively, and hopefully we'll get there soon enough.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, Sands.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. We're going to go to item number four, and this is, I wanted to take a moment to recognize National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I want to recognize Chief Lydi from our Police Department, and I think I see, I don't know, Chief, who else do you have there with you?
We have Captain Bob Calamores, Deputy Chief Don Smith, and Sergeant Jim Wiltsy.
Awesome. I also want to thank residents, Dr. Joan Poster and her husband Dennis Poster for requesting this important recognition be placed on the Board of Selectmen agenda. Nancy and Tom, if you remember last year when we were active together very early in our term, we got to do this in person with our, with our law enforcement, and it was a really nice experience. So I just want to read that, "Whereas the town of Fairfield proudly celebrates January 9th, 2021, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. On this important day, citizens from around our nation are given an opportunity to thank the dedicated men and women of our Police Department who have chosen the path of public service and law enforcement in Fairfield, which was first organized in the year 1661 with the appointment of the first Town Marshal. The standing Police Department was created by Town Ordinance in 1930 and with seven officers to protect and serve the citizens of Fairfield. Today, dedicated sworn officers, telecommunications, animal control, special officers, administrative support, and marine guards protect and serve the town of Fairfield. Whereas Fairfield's police put on a badge each day, knowing that they may face extremely dangerous situations while carrying out the duties, and for this, we recognize and extend sincere gratitude to the men and women in blue. On National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and every day, Fairfield supports and recognizes all those who stand on the front line and continue to make our community safe. And whereas residents, including children, are encouraged to show their thanks and appreciation to our Police Department by sending emails or notes or leading up to January 9th, emails can be sent to the Department of Public Information Officer, Lieutenant Antonio Granata, at agranata@fairfieldct.org, or a written correspondence can be sent to Chief Lydi, care of the Fairfield Police Department at 100 Reef Road, Fairfield, 06824. Most importantly, if residents see a police officer, please take the time to thank them. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Kupchak, First Selectwoman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim January 9th, 2021, as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day." And thank you, Chief, and Captain and Lieutenant.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all the men and women in our organization, we really appreciate you taking the time to declare this Appreciation Day. We have always considered it an honor and a privilege to serve the town of Fairfield, and we will continue to consider it the same. And thank you very much.
And I would like to just take a moment to recognize your announcement, Chief, that you will be retiring after 38 amazing years serving the people of the town of Fairfield. And I just wanted to personally thank you, and also thank you on behalf of the town of Fairfield, for your dedication, your commitment, and your stellar work on behalf of our community to keep us safe.
Thank you very much, First Selectwoman. It's been an honor and a privilege, and it was a great 38 years, and I wouldn't do anything different. I had a really good time, and this town has been wonderful to not only myself, but our entire agency, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if either one of the selectmen would like to make any comments, I'll open it up.
Nancy, feel free to go first, if you'd like.
Thank you. Chief, I want to echo the First Selectwoman's comments to the department broadly. Thank you for everything all of you do every day to keep us safe and healthy, and you keep the trains on the tracks. But I also want to thank you personally, because I know literally this work and this service is in your blood and in your bones, and you have been, in the few years that I've gotten the chance to work with you and alongside of you, talking about some really important issues, and we've had some great conversations. I know you're off- I know you're off to have a great future, but I want to thank you for the past work and look forward to continuing our friendship, but, you know, grateful for the working relationship we've had and just wish you all good things and good health.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, um, first extend my appreciation to all the, the members of the police department. It is extraordinary, the effort and the work that's put in on a day-to-day basis, um, to keep Fairfield safe and secure. Uh, and you work very well, and I've had the privilege of seeing it with all the other town departments, uh, when it's required, and it's truly, uh, impressive to watch. We in Fairfield are very lucky, and quite frankly, um, you don't get the thank yous that you deserve on a, on a, uh, a daily basis, given what's gone on in the world in the past couple of years. And we're truly lucky. We appreciate all that you all do, as well as all of your colleagues. And please extend, uh, my sincere thanks and appreciation to all of them. And Chief, specifically to you and your announcement, man, I didn't realize you were so old. Uh, but, in all sincerity, I, I do want to, uh, congratulate you. Thank you for your, your time and your dedication to the town. Uh, I've had the privilege to work with you, uh, first when you were, um, the Assistant Chief and working side by side with Gary, and then when you were elevated, elevated to Chief. And it's obvious, um, your commitment, your professionalism, and, uh, your dedication to the, to the townspeople. And that will not be forgotten. Uh, all the best to you and, and a long and happy and healthy retirement. Uh, stay in touch, and, uh, thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Selectwoman Flynn. I, I've always considered it a privilege to work, uh, with you all these years. And I'm not going far, so I'll still be around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Item number five, uh, for information only, um, I want to just thank, um, the following people who have resigned from several commissions. Uh, on the Conservation Commission, Kathleen O'Donnell, uh, has resigned. And, uh, Ethics Commission, uh, Robert Belido, who's moved out of town, has, uh, resigned. And on the Park and Recreation Commission, Mary, Mary von Contra, who actually served a very long time, um, on the concert, on the Park and Rec Commission. I actually served with her when I was the Board of Education rep on Park and Rec. And she's, uh, she's really dedicated quite a lot of her time to our community in so many different ways. I want to thank all of them for their time and their, um, commitment to our community. Would anyone else like to make any comments? Sure.
Yeah, I would like to add my appreciation for all of their efforts. Um, it's true amazing that, that we get so many talented people that, um, give selflessly of their time to the community, and we can't run the government without them. And these people in particular have been huge contributors through the years. So I want to thank them, and I would be remiss without a special mention of Rob Belido, who I served with on the Board of Finance, and he served, uh, as Vice Chairman when I was Chairman. And Rob is a dear friend, uh, and Fairfield owes Rob as well as his entire family. Um, a, a lot of, uh, thank yous, uh, for their efforts and their contributions to the community through the years. So thanks to everybody, and my personal thanks and, uh, best wishes to Rob as well.
Yes, here, here, exactly. So exactly what Mr. Flynn just said, I echo, um, and say thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, appointments. To hear and consider and act upon the following appointments. Uh, we have Ethics Commission, which requires, we have two Ethics Commission that require unanimous vote from the Board of Selectmen and RTM approval. We have Brian Cantor of Curtis Harris, who will fill the vacancy of Robert Belido, and Dana Carey of Greenacre Lane, who will fill the vacancy for David Brockwell, whose term expired. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any discussion, comments?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, to make a couple of comments. Um, I want to thank both these candidates for generously giving of their time to, to talk with me about their interest. Um, Dana and I have had a chance to talk over many, many months. Um, sometimes really hard, challenging, uncomfortable conversations. And I want to thank you, Dana, for never shying away from answering my questions, uh, heeding my call of concern and, and caution. And, um, we talked about everything, you know, as it related to politics and ethics. And, uh, I, I really think that, um, you have, uh, you've been driven, as your work has shown. Um, you're driven by a, a true sense of the health, safety, and well-being of this community, and I stand by that wholeheartedly. Um, I think that early on, if I could name the, you know, the elephant in the room, I think it was a, a cause for concern that some people had called your work political. And, you know, we, we've seen that really you've just been, um, searching for justice and truth. And a lot has come to light because of your efforts. Um, the Ethics Commission, uh, you know, somewhat encompasses that. Um, but this is not a political board. It's really an apolitical board, not even a bipartisan one. And I believe that your willingness, um, to do what's in the best interest of the town is at the forefront of your intention. Um, and I want to thank you for that. And for Mr. Cantor, whom we've just had a, a more recent conversation, but I know that you've been a, a dedicated public servant and committed, elected, uh, in the past, and want to thank you again for throwing your hat into the ring. Uh, for me personally, it was very warming to talk about, to hear you reference the Talmud and the Torah, which at the heart of, of those things, it's all about ethical, um, wrestling. And I think that you will really also be well-served. And I've also spoken to the Chair of this committee, who, um, impartially, but, uh, welcoming for both of your participation and, and eager to do the work. It's not particularly active board in, in the sense of, um, you are responding to complaints made. But my hope in the year moving forward is that as this, uh, really, the Ethics Commission is responsible for investigating allegations of unethical behavior or violations of the town charter standards of conduct. Um, and the commission is also, um, using the interpretation of the standard of conduct and the code of ethics. My hope would be that the RTM and the appropriate body, and maybe at the appropriate point, a, uh, Charter Review Committee will include this commission for input on how to maybe give more teeth to some of these, um, body, to these codes that, that you follow. Um, and perhaps there's an opportunity to be a little bit more active in the pursuit of, um, a more, you know, ethical, uh, system, while not, so. With that, I want to thank you both, and, um, I think you both bring interesting and different skillsets to the table, and I thank you.
I would, um, thanks, Nancy. I would like to first off, um, thank both these individuals for agreeing to serve. I would like to hope that this will not be a busy commission and, uh, that it will be uneventful for you during your terms. Uh, I think we all hope that. Um, I have had the good fortune to know, uh, both candidates for that. And I have, uh, no doubt of their qualifications and their integrity to serve in these positions. So, um, I fully support them. Um, and in reference to, to Dana Carey, uh, given that has been, there has been a touchstone on that, um, arguably due to the Phil Pyle and others, I'd just like to say that, um, I've known Dana and her husband Tim for a very long time. And Tim, when he served on the, uh, Board of Education. And both these individuals, uh, in my public and private conversations with them have always, always, always had the best interests of the town at heart. They've always been very fact-based in any dealings with me. Uh, I have no doubt of their independence. And I have no doubt that they would be willing to, uh, follow the facts. That Dana would be willing to follow the facts wherever they might lead her. And I can say the same thing, I believe, for Mr. Cantor. So I'd like to thank you both once again for stepping up. And I'd like to wish you the best and a very uneventful term on the Ethics Commission.
Thank you. Uh, thank you both. And, um, I've known both Brian and Dana for a very long time. And I think they are both, uh, amazing people who have dedicated themselves in many different ways to our community, and I'm very grateful that both of you have decided to step up and serve once again. So thank you both. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Flynn? Passage unanimously. Thank you both very much again. Congratulations. You're welcome to stay on, but I tell everybody whose portion has moved on, you're, you know, if you do have something else, you're, you're welcome to sign off.
Um, I took so much of the airspace, but I was curious if there was, I know Brenda usually give an opportunity for the candidates to, to say anything.
Absolutely, you're right.
And I took a lot of airspace, so thank you for that.
I'm sorry, uh, Brian or Dana, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Uh, I just look forward to serving and working with Brian and the rest of the committee.
Just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to be serving the town again, particularly, uh, in this position. Uh, and I'm very grateful for the support of all of you and your kind words. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
The next item is, um, uh, B, Park and Rec Commission. We have, uh, Margaret Horton of East Lawn Street, who to fill a vacancy for Mary von Contra. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tom?
Sorry, I'm unmuted. Second it.
Uh, uh, any discussion from the body?
Yeah, yes, 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 because I am so proud to be able to, to vote in support of my friend and former colleague, Margaret Horton. Um, I would say that among the, the 40 members of the RTM, when we got to serve together, Margaret is one of the most thoughtful, considerate, uh, least bipartisan, really interested in doing what is right for the community in the best interest, ask good questions, um, really just thinking about not only her own kids, but, you know, the health, safety, and well-being of all our kids and the community. And, um, she's just a great egg, and I'm so happy that she's willing to throw her hat into the ring and serve, because we will all be better served for it.
Hey Nancy, I just, uh, it's Tom. Um, I, I want to echo your sentiments and wish you the best of luck, and thank you for serving. I think one thing, I think Nancy, you said she's one of the least bipartisan. I think.
I meant least, thank you, least partisan, thank you, because I would hate to leave you all with that impression. Because really, she is, um, issue-oriented. Thank you, Tom, thank you.
No problem. And thank you for, uh, thank you for your commitment to serve again.
And Margaret, I, I thank you for stepping up to serve. I actually served on the Park and Rec Commission, and I think it was a really enjoyable experience. I learned a lot, um, about our community. I got to meet a lot of our residents, and I hope you enjoy your service on the commission. And if you need anything from me, I'm always here if you have, if you need to talk or if you have a question. Um, Margaret, you are muted. If you wanted to say something, I'm sorry. I, I want to give you that opportunity.
That's okay. Sorry, I'm blushing with all these kind things you are all saying. I love Fairfield. I'm so excited to have this opportunity to serve. Um, I, especially, I think, um, Parks and Rec plays such a pivotal role, and especially in, in kind of coming together. I think they've done just a tremendous job over the past year with community activities, um, keeping us, you know, kind of together as a community in COVID, and I'm looking forward to being part of that. So I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. No further discussion. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Congratulations, Margaret. Item number C, Special Project Standing Building Committee, which requires RTM approval. Stephen Kornick, of Home Fair Drive, uh, there, this is to fill a vacancy for Gerald Kilo, uh, who resigned in March. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Now, I'm not sure. I don't see Stephen on the line or may have called in. Stephen, are you on the line? Okay, I don't hear him.
Hi, I'm on the line.
Oh, hi, hello, Stephen. So, uh, I just, I'll just start off by saying thank you for stepping up to serve on this committee. It is an important committee. Um, it does deal with, you know, projects that are $3 million or less roofs and, and things of that nature in our town. But I do appreciate you stepping up to serve. Um, Nancy or Tom, do you have any, any comments or questions?
Just to say thank you so much for stepping up.
All right, a couple of things. I'd like to say, um, oh, sorry. I'd like to say thank you very much for stepping up and agreeing to serve on this. Um, I would also love to know which projects, um, at, at a certain point in time are under the auspices of this committee right now. I've kind of lost track of that. And I would like to know, um, what the committee's working on, if we could do that at some point. It was a very active committee, um, years ago, when we had, uh, several different building projects, uh, going on, uh, relative to renovations of schools and the like, smaller renovations. I would imagine there'll be more of those as, uh, we get into the, kind of, the re, the remodeling and the renovations of some of the schools are aging a bit. So I would imagine that this, uh, committee might become a bit more, um, active in future years. So, uh, good luck. Um, thank you for using your time and talents for the town.
I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, look forward to meeting some people.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Tom?
Hi, sorry.
That's okay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Stephen, and thank you again for stepping up to serve.
Thank you.
The next item, number seven, Town Clerk, to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed five-year agreement with InfoQuick Solutions Incorporated, effective 1/19/2021 to 1/18/2026, to provide the office of the Town Clerk with record management system services as detailed in RFP 215-79. Uh, we have Betsy Brown on the line and also Gerald Foley. Um, first of all, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, Betsy, did you want to start or?
Sure, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Um, this is just a continuation of my existing agreement with IQS. We did a very in-depth RFP back in 2014 and 15. Did a lot of research about what we really wanted in our records management system. Um, we went out with an RFQ and, or an RFP, and we did some interviews. And we had a checklist of what we wanted to see, and bottom line was IQS met all our criteria. We're very happy with them, and I would like to continue the relationship. They're keeping the same cost, um, as far as per document charge. And as a matter of fact, I think we were ahead of the curve than other municipalities, um, with electronic recording, with having our documents online, especially during COVID, where other municipalities weren't. And the only change is, uh, they plan on going to the $2 document fee as far as people needing to print from home. Uh, it's a statutory requirement where we get a dollar per page, so the split would be, you know, a dollar each.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go right ahead.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Betsy, Happy New Year. Thanks for being here. Gerald, same thing.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you.
Betsy, I, I seem to recall this, uh, coming before us back in 2014. Um, you are happy with this service to date, and would changing out this service be a burden? How difficult would that be if, if you decided?
burden? How difficult would that be if, if you decided, if we decided that you needed to go to a different service, just so that I'm aware of the context?
IQS is basically to my office what Munis is to the Finance Department and Human Resources Department.
Right. How difficult to swap out if you were to swap out, just so that we're aware?
Well, we'd have to go through this process all over again as far as interviews.
No, the conversion itself, let's say that process was done, would it be difficult to con- um, would it be difficult to convert, or is it a simple tut and pace job from what's already there? That's just what I'm trying to get.
No, it would be a tremendous undertaking that just, it wouldn't be good for either party. Um, just from experience, when I had to get my records back from the prior vendor, it took a while. They were not cooperative. Not saying that, you know, this vendor would be like that, but it's a huge undertaking.
It's not going to be the highest priority if you're leaving. I get it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, Mr. Foley, um, can you remind us of, of the purchasing policy? The only, the only thing I, I question here, okay, is what process was gone through to reconfirm, other than the fact that the Town Clerk's office is very happy with their service, and they kept the price point the same? What else do we do when, in this instance, a six-year-old, uh, contract comes back up for renewal, if you don't mind?
Yeah, so what I did is I, I reached out to, to Betsy, basically to confirm the, the questions that she just validated. Was, was, is she happy with the existing service? Are they fulfilling the requirements that they had, you know, said that they were going to five years ago when we originally set up the agreement and, and, and basically went through all that, just to validate that there were no issues? And then, um, the, this process as it is, because we were going to go for a five-year agreement, um, I thought it'd be best to, to present it back to the, to the boards to, you know, have you guys affirm that we would go for a renewal, and it was supposed to go like for a one-year extension or a two-year extension. So, we're basically, we're going to be committed to this firm for another five years. So, I thought that that would be, you know, more prudent to bring it back. But I, but I confirmed that, um, that the service, I went, I went back and looked at the original submissions, um, and, you know, I went and reviewed all the documents in terms of why we selected the company, and everything seemed, all the ducks seemed to be in a row there, and then just basically revalidating that, um, that the firm is in fact, you know, doing all the things they said they were going to. And so since those things were all positive, positive, um, I, that's why I presented it, uh, back to, to the board for, uh, for their review and approval.
Is this consistent with our purchasing policy, not going out for an RFP?
Yeah, cause it, yeah.
Explain that. What's the provision?
Yeah, so, right, so the, so the rationale there is, is it's basically when we set it up originally, you, we made, we made a long-term commitment with the, so it's, it's similar to as, as Betsy just said, we had, say for Munis, Munis is a very good example. So, what we did is when we took, we had an old system called Phoenix, we converted from Phoenix over to Munis, and it's, it's quite, quite the process, because you have to go back and, and revalidate all the data, you have to do a lot of conversions. So, it's, it's a very heavy, heavy effort to, to do that. Um, so, for example, with Munis, well, I think we've been on Munis, I, I, since I've been here, been here five years, but my understanding is we've probably been on Munis for at least, at least ten years, maybe approaching fifteen years. Um, so what happens is, once you get into those types of systems, there's a tendency to stay with those systems and, and not to, to go back out. Um, usually what happens is, is you're, and say in some regards, you're almost, you go, only go back out when you're, you're almost forced to, or there's a, say there's a major change in technology. So, in, in Betsy's case, what happened was is prior to this system, the system they had was, it was all basically a paper-based system, so, but as Betsy alluded to, is we went and now the things, the documents are posted online. So, that was like a, a leading-edge type of technology. Um, so I thought it'd be prudent for another five years, and maybe, you know, say four years, plus or minus, you would go back and then re-review it and see if it's something you want to continue for yet another term. Or even at that time, instead of going for five years, maybe only do a one-year extension or a two-year extension. But I thought that this particular, uh, software, this particular application, I thought that a, a five-year, um, award, I thought was, was prudent, given the technology and all that I know. Plus the fact too, it's locking us into that same, those same fees for a five-year period, uh, unlike other software products, which typically go up, you know, it can go up ten, fifteen percent a year. So, I thought that that was another prudent thing, because it's so more of, um, a fixed cost.
No, I, I thank you for that. I understand. Uh, quick question. I, thank you very much for the thorough answer. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, you obviously reviewed, I'm assuming Mr. Baldwin's on the line, you obviously reviewed the contract and all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and were fine from a legal perspective with this document?
Yes, that's all correct.
Okay, I, I appreciate, and, and, um, Mr. Foley, I think you drew a good analogy, and, and Mr. Brown did as well, as it being, um, you know, um, consistent with kind of the Munis system. Um, so I understand that, and I, and I respect that. My questions weren't at all questioning the decision to really stay with the system. I do want to make sure in situations like this, um, there can be, and I'm not saying there was in this instance, but there can be a consist, a, a tendency to get complacent when people are happy with a service and not actually doing the due diligence, um, when a contract comes up for renewal. I've seen this many times in my professional life, where you're happy with a service, um, you don't really want to change it out because of all the headaches. However, you send it, you should send it out anyway, uh, to make sure that the market hasn't shifted, that the dynamics haven't changed, that there isn't better available technology, um, and that there isn't a better price point. So, I would encourage us, um, in the future to just make sure that we do that, uh, so as standard part of our process, so we're not complacent in just saying, hey, everybody's happy, kumbaya, let's, let's just go with this again. Um, because I find that you can really miss opportunities i- i- if that's the way you do it. So, that, that would just be my only, um, comment on this. And again, that's not specific to this, uh, instance, it's just overall, when we're renewing contracts.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tom, I didn't hear you.
I said aye, I'm sorry.
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, uh, thank you, Betsy, and, um, I don't, I think Gerald, the-
I'm still here.
Okay, thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
Item number-
You're welcome, thank you.
Is it appropriate to, um, move to waive the reading of this and just get?
Absolutely.
Well, then I will make a motion to waive the reading.
Thank you. Second?
Muted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, and I'm going to, um, hand it over to Chief Liddy.
She's running his way out the door, he's asking for more money.
Thank you very much. Um, but before you was an item called the Port Security Sustainability Grant, and, uh, for the last decade, basically, the, uh, federal homeland security has invested heavily in port security, uh, to basically buy down risk. They've determined that, um, ports of entry can be security risks, and they are supporting communities like Fairfield. We have two vessels. The first one is a thirty-three-foot Defender, which was purchased one hundred percent using federal, um, federal dollars. And then we have a twenty-three-foot, uh, shallow rescue boat, which was purchased with a seventy-five-twenty-five match. They are offering us, uh, a total of forty-eight thousand, which will be a seventy-five-twenty-five match, and we would like to use it to update our dated electronics on the ten-year-old boat.
Any questions, anyone?
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead Nancy, if you have anything.
I, I, no, I don't.
So, Chief, how old are these boats again? You just said ten years old, is that right?
Um, the larger vessel, the thirty-three-foot, was bought in two thousand and eleven, and the twenty-three-foot was bought in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, and these funds are to update the electronics? Just give me a little bit more, what does that mean?
So, the, the, uh, the larger vessel, the thirty-three-foot, um, has a lot of advanced electronics. It's a state-of-the-art, um, vessel. Its purchase price was nearly a half a million dollars back in two thousand and eleven. So, there are different navigation systems, um, the, Jim, maybe you can help me out with some of the electronics? And the technology is antiquated. There's, uh, side scan sonar.
There's a radar function that's been breaking down, that is no longer feasible to invest money into because of the technology that's been upgraded.
Correct. Um, and the, the, the rest of the funding from the federal government would be used over a three-year period for normal maintenance, uh, filters, zincs, and, and things of that nature, which we would be doing anyway.
Now, Chief, the, the one thing on that is that the normal maintenance stuff, I, I seem to recall previously that we couldn't use funds such as, such as that for normal maintenance. It had to be to augment the budget, not replace the budget. Is that wrong?
I, in this particular case, um, it's, it's not correct. We, our grant application was very specific, and the federal government recognizes that, uh, that these assets are very expensive and probably wouldn't be purchased or maintained correctly by most municipalities. And they feel strong enough to invest in the assets that they have provided us. So, we can use it for normal maintenance.
How are these assets deployed? I, I mean, give me some examples of how they're used. I understand, you know, somebody gets into trouble, there's boaters out there, we've all kind of read those stories, uh, of, you know, the, the rescues and the things of that sort. So, I get that. How else have they been utilized, just so that I understand a little bit? Because I don't think, quite frankly, the town fully appreciates how these assets get utilized either.
Usually. Well, let me turn it over to our primary captain of the vessel, Sergeant, uh, Jim Wilty, and maybe he can highlight some of the different calls for service that they've entertained.
Uh, just a quick, a quick, uh, history. Back after September eleventh, they did, um, the Coast Guard and the federal government did a security risk assessment of federal ports in and around, uh, Konos, the United States, and realized that we had an issue with port security, which was then born the Port Security Grant Twenty program to provide small towns such as ours, means to assist regionally if we had catastrophic events. Um, we are right next to Bridgeport, which is a port of entry for international vessels. The port, um, the port of Bridgeport has I ninety-five, the trains, the asset transit, the port jet ferry, all traveling in and out within one mile of our shoreline, for that qualifies Fairfield to be under this umbrella and pool of money that the government buys, to assist in, uh, the maritime security of Long Island Sound. We use day-to-day operations on the vessels just like a regular patrol car would, responding to car, uh, calls for service, from a fisherman getting a hook stuck in his hand to a vessel hitting the rocks out by the lighthouse. Along with that, when the MARSEC level, which is the maritime security threat level, elevates in and around the holidays, Fourth of July, um, we regionally pa- we partner with Bridgeport and do ferry escorts, um, they're called Viper operations, where we'll go out and escort the ferry, just as a command presence of more police vessels on the water during elevated times of travel, prior to COVID. Um, so, day-to-day operations is the twenty-three, the twenty-three footer and the thirty-three footer are used to normal, you know, just regular patrol functions, uh, just as you would see a patrol car traveling down the post road, you would see the vessel traveling in and out of, uh, Southport Harbor and South Benson Marina and along our shoreline. And our reef is a hotspot for vessels and fishermen getting stuck, um, not only walking out onto the reef. Um, a few years ago, I'm sure you remember, we had a couple, three, three fishermen drowned on the reef, but this is our instrument or tool, if you will, to provide assistance to not only our community, but the region as well.
That, um, sufficient, Mr. Flynn?
Do we, I'm sorry, do we, um, do we get called? Do you get asked to do a lot of regional stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, any, anything that happens, anything that happens in the surrounding area, um, we would respond to. We, we-
Mutual aid, bring us with the Coast Guard, Westport, which, well-
And although our jurisdiction stops at middle ground, um, you know, we're, we're available, you know, anywhere on Long Island Sound to, to assist.
I guess what I was looking for more of was number of incidents you respond to and things of that sort, both within Fairfield and, and within the region. You know, how busy, forget, I understand the patrolling and that's important and all that. I was really looking more for the actual incidence and the type of incidence that the assets are used on. Um, just, just I, I was curious, because we do maintain these things, we do have expense with them, and I just wanted to know. So, uh, maybe that could be something you could follow up with, with me, you know, within the next, uh, few weeks. It's not going to hold up an approval of this. So, uh, thank you for your time right now.
Thank you. We, we absolutely have that data and will forward it to you.
Appreciate it.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, Community and Economic Development, um, Director is here to hear and consider and approve an amendment to a lease and license-
Oh, so moving, should I move to waive the reading?
Oh, it's very short.
Okay, I didn't know.
Agreement with Fairfield Community Theater LLC for town-owned property adjacent to fourteen ten Post Road. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Sorry, I was looking ahead.
Thanks, Nancy.
Second.
Anything to make the meeting shorter, right?
I mean, please.
Um, okay, Mark Barhart is on the line, if anyone has any questions?
Mark, would you-
Yes, briefly, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
No, step us through it, thank you. That's exactly what it is, Nancy.
Just, yeah, very briefly, uh, the town entered into a lease, license, and access agreement about a year and a half ago with Cleavant Properties, um, doing business as Fairfield Community Theater LLC as part of efforts to, uh, renovate the building that houses the, uh, community theater. Um, recently, they have, Cleavant has been looking to, to lease the space formerly occupied by number two ninety-nine. Uh, they have a prospective tenant who is a restaurant operator, is looking to establish an outdoor dining area as part of their, uh, operation, uh, which would require an amendment to the lease to allow for a slightly larger leasehold footprint. Uh, in addition to that, Old Post Tavern had requested, based on their experience, uh, with the pandemic and expanding, uh, their footprint to accommodate outdoor dining, the, uh, flexibility to do so as well. Uh, so, this simply, uh, recognizes, uh, both those, uh, situations, increases the leasehold area, and applies the same, uh, fee structure as was originally contemplated and approved by the boards, uh, back a year and a half ago, which is, uh, another eighteen years left to run, plus extensions. So, happy to answer any questions, but basically all the terms and conditions remain the same, just simply extrapolated the agreed-upon lease rate and applied it to the larger footprint, subject to your approval.
May I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, first of all, we have to do anything we can to support our restaurants in town at the, at this specific point, so, um, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're working closely with them, and I know you guys are. Um, so thank you for that. But secondly, this brings up two thoughts in my mind. Uh, first of all, are the rates being charged here, uh, consistent with what we charge other, other, um, facilities in town that, that hope to use some of our- other, um, facilities in town that, that hope to use some of our, um, real estate for their businesses, such as this is doing? That, that's my first question.
Yeah, we only have a few instances of this, and this is squarely in the middle of, of those rates. We're trying, uh, I've, I've had conversations with, uh, C., uh, Tom Bremer, Chief Administrative Officer, to equalize, uh, those lease terms, uh, but again, not to complicate things unduly here, we just wanted to apply the same rate that was just agreed upon a year ago, and we'll try our best, uh, as other things come up for renewal, uh, we have others, um, pending.
It is market rate, though, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I wanted to make sure that there was no, um, there was going to be no issue there with, with us being accused of playing favorites or anything like that, that was the first thing that was on my mind. The second thing that was on my mind is, a, as I have gone out and patronized some restaurants and seen what, what some of our restaurateurs have done with outside property, which is pretty amazing, actually, um, I can only imagine that we're going to get it, e, even after the pandemic is owner, is over, uh, inundated with requests to do things, um, so that people can dine outside, because I think the one thing that's come out of the pandemic is that, at least, um, from the people I talk to, they, they like it, particularly during, uh, maybe not during December, but they certainly like it during September, maybe. Uh, so my question is, are we developing kind of a, a more holistic look at, how are we going to manage that? And, and are we getting inundated, or do you anticipate we will be inundated with a bunch of requests related kind of extending outdoor dining beyond the pandemic and the like?
I agree with that assessment, um, I, I think we will, uh, see, uh, based on the experience we've had, uh, some demand to allow for increased, um, outdoor dining opportunities. Uh, we, I went through an expedited permit process for restaurants and approved, um, uh, over sixty-five, uh, restaurant applications as part of that, forty, forty of which were new, new, uh, restaurants that previously did not have, uh, outdoor dining as part of their, uh, business plan. So I think the demand will be there, and I think the biggest issue that we've had, we, we will have in the future, uh, is with respect to parking, uh, because currently, you only have, you're given a hundred fifty square feet free before you have to accommodate parking and go through either a, a variance application of ZPA or otherwise, uh, allow for it. And I, I do think that this experience has shown us that, uh, perhaps we can, uh, fine-tune our parking requirements, and I, I've had those conversations of planning and zoning already.
I, you know, Mark, I couldn't agree more, and I just, I just want us to be proactive in this type of situation.
Absolutely.
Look, you know, they're, they're going to need our help, and I just think, instead of waiting for the applications to come in, please, I'm not saying that's what you're doing, I'm just saying, I think we should anticipate, anticipate now that we're going to need a more fulsome and policy to cover the town related to this issue, and that policy has to be-
I agree more.
Yeah, it, it's got to be consistently applied, it's got to be market rate, not that we're trying to make a ton of money on it, we're trying to actually just make sure that everybody's got a level playing field, and that we really help them, um, with their businesses. I think the general public likes it, and I think, I know it's really saved a lot of our restaurateurs. So i, if we could, you know, be proactive with this, uh, and put the, you know, whatever we need to do to come up with that policy, um, I, I think we should be doing that now as opposed to just waiting. I, I would like to be in the forefront of that, that's what I would recommend.
I, I think we've done that. The expedited permit application process, uh, does show us the way forward, and again, uh, I think we're going to have to look at our, uh, regulatory requirements and maybe make some adjustments there, but that, uh, those conversations have already started.
So, do we have a-
Yeah, just to jump in, Tom, that we, we worked really hard throughout the whole time, and, and I think my administration has been extraordinarily proactive in supporting businesses throughout the pandemic, and as Mark illustrated, we, we jumped to action, we turned around permits in a, two days or less. We, um, we were very helpful to our business community, and we continue to have these conversations all the time to make sure that we are proactive and assisting our businesses in a way we can. And I think it's going to be really beautiful down, uh, the community theater. I hope some of you saw the, the new, uh, marquee was put up, and it looks really lovely, and, uh, the Cleavants have a really nice, we've been down several times for tours, uh, to walk, uh, the space, and some of the ideas he has for that space that obviously have to go through the approval process, but I think are going to be really, uh, it's going to really engage that area, and, um, it's going to be a vibrant and active and, uh, special place that will really tie our town together.
Um, yeah, and let me be, let me be clear, I'm not, I'm not in any way suggesting that that hasn't happened, and it has been nice to see what's happened. All I'm suggesting is, as we move forward, given that I think this is going to continue, that whatever we need to do, whatever support we need to lend to get whatever needs to be done completed, we should be doing that, um, now, because I do think this is a huge opportunity, that's all. I think there's been a lot of great work done to date, I just want that to continue and be formalized. So, thank you.
And I wanted to mention, um, full disclosure, I've been working with Sacred Heart in an advisory capacity around the theater specifically, um, sort of wearing my day job hat, um, in the film world, and if it's preferred, and this is perhaps a question for Attorney Baldwin, if it's preferred, I abstain here, uh, back to Mr. Flynn's question about playing favorites and all of that, I'm happy to do so, but obviously supportive of anything we can do for small businesses, and it would be in that vein that I would support this, uh, for no other reason, but just didn't want it to come to light later and have anybody question my own, um, interest here, which is not financial, FYI.
Well, just to be, just to be clear, it's, uh, it's the amendment, uh, with the license and access agreement, uh, with Cleavant Properties, um, Fairfield Community Theater, and, uh, in furtherance of, uh, restaurant operations as opposed to the theater itself.
Right, right, I just thought, you know, full disclosure here, because I don't want anything to interrupt our ability to be helpful here, and, and I don't want somebody to be able to come back and say, "Well, you know, she's doing this," so. So I don't know if, uh, Mr. Baldwin has a thought on that, or if I should-
Nancy, I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat for me what your, uh, connection is again? I, I missed that part.
Y, yeah, working, um, in an advisory capacity, not in any official way as of right now, but just advising in terms of programming and supporting the theater specifically, the events and the programming that happens there. And making, and helping to make connections in terms of, like, development and fundraising, although that hasn't specifically happened yet, but that's the intention, um, so I just, as I-
Are you compensated for that?
I'm not.
I don't think that it's a, a, a problem, then, but, uh, if, if you would be more comfortable, um, you know, uh, not participating in the vote, that's something that's up to you, but, uh, I don't think it, it poses an immediate, uh, issue in terms of, um, a conflict.
If you are comfortable, as our town attorney, having me, uh, vote in support, which I am inclined to do, then I'm happy to participate in a vote.
Great. Very good.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, uh, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number ten, Nancy, do I make any questions?
Here's where I can move, yes, here's where I will move to waive the reading, as much as I love to hear you speak these items.
Thank you.
Yes, make some, uh, moving to waive the reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, so this is an item, uh, Mark is again on here, and it, um, is regarding, uh, updating our affordable housing plan, and I'll hand it over to you, Mark.
Yeah, again, just very briefly, for those, uh, following, um, the town last updated its affordable housing plan back in two thousand and fourteen, there's a new provision in the state statutes that, uh, uh, requires, um, I guess, requires communities to update their affordable housing plan or, uh, consider updates every five years. Um, there really is no enforcement mechanism, other than there's this reporting function that the First Select Woman would have to make to the, uh, Commissioner, but being that, uh, we've made considerable progress with the Affordable Housing Plan, that we did update, and, and specifically with respect to the action steps that were enumerated in that plan, uh, the Affordable Housing Committee did feel it was appropriate, uh, to, uh, do, uh, to a full engagement with the public and, and look at, uh, updating our plan, to look at other suggestions. The timing is particularly apropos, because the Plan of Conservation Development, Planning and Zoning, is also doing that update. The housing is a complete, key component of that plan, and planning and zoning, uh, the Commission and the staff there have asked if the Affordable Housing Committee would, would partner with them in, in providing some, some data to support their plan update. Uh, so, all things, uh, being that, uh, I will also recognize that, uh, the Chairman, uh, Steve Grasswall, the Affordable Housing Committee, is on the phone, I believe, although she's, he's not able to participate fully in this, but at our last meeting, the Affordable Housing Committee did, uh, make this recommendation, and also, um, is requesting or recommending that you consider allocating, uh, fifteen thousand dollars from the Housing Trust Fund for this purpose, uh, which we would then, uh, use alongside of, uh, federal community development block grants to engage a consultant, go through the similar process that we did about six years ago to update our plan. So, that's the purpose of this, and I'm happy to, um, entertain any questions that, that folks may have.
Yeah, fifteen of how much, and also, how much of that would go specifically to hiring that independent person, and then what would other, the money be used for if not, you know, hiring that person?
Yeah, we anticipate our overall project cost to be roughly twenty-five thousand, fifteen of which would come from the Housing Trust Fund, ten from community development block grant, and most of that would be for the planning consultant to work with the committee and other stakeholders, to do the workshops and other engagement, uh, exercises that would, uh, produce the plan and action steps associated with that. Um, you know, there are some small costs associated with running meetings and other materials associated with it, printing, uh, for example, but most of it is for the, the expertise that we bring, uh, from a planning consultant. And that estimate is based on not only the work that we did previously, um, as well as, um, you know, efforts from other municipalities that are currently going through this process to meet that, that statutory requirement.
And, and fifteen of how much would, is remaining in the balance, would be remaining?
Uh, we have over a half million dollars in-
Yeah, so it's, yeah, yeah.
-in the Housing Trust Fund, yeah, so this is relatively small allocation.
I just wanted to point out that, that it's a small amount compared to what-
Thank you.
And, um, in light of, um, COVID, and knowing that community engagement becomes critical here, how do you plan to overcome those obstacles?
Yeah, that's a good question. It does present some challenges, um, under the circumstances. It will take us some time to, uh, even though we have a RFQ, RFP ready to go, it takes some time to, uh, interview consultants and, and bring somebody on board. So by the time, we're really thinking April or May, by the time we have somebody on board and are beginning the, uh, public engagement piece, and hopefully we'll be in a much better position, uh, as we approach the summer and fall to do some of the intensive, uh, public outreach and workshops that we think are important to the end result here.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
There are other ways to do it, you can certainly do surveys, but I, I think, and, and Zoom-type meetings, but we really thought it was helpful to have people in a room and doing these exercises the last time we went through them.
Yeah.
So I got a, I, I, I have a couple of follow-up questions, if you don't mind. Um, so the trust fund that has five hundred thousand, is this the same fund that we tapped in order to buy that property a, a couple of months back?
Three fifty Quincy, yes, yep.
So how much was that again, remind me?
Uh, it was two ninety-five, two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
So, so of that five hundred thousand-
And so what's, what's, the half million dollars is, is net of that, right?
Okay, so it's net of that, so that's what's left, but we also understood at the time that there, there may be a need to tap that five hundred thousand, um, for additional purchases around there to put that property together, correct?
Well, I think we, we do envision that there'll be additional financing to actually make that redevelopment plan a reality. I, I would like to think that we might be able to figure a way in which we could utilize the three hundred thousand dollars, more or less, that we've already allocated, uh, toward that end, and, and leverage that in a better way, uh, such that we won't ask for additional allocations for the actual purchase and aggregation of lots here. So, uh, we're still working on that with the Chief Fiscal Officer.
Yeah. Um, I would just, um, I, I do want to get an update on where that stands at the, at the appropriate time, the, the previous one, and monitor how we're managing the trust fund, just to make sure, and I thank you for that. Um, obviously, this is, uh, an important initiative, and I'd like to congratulate the town for its efforts so far on, on its affordable housing plan, because I, I know it's, it's something that's been near and dear to the First Select Woman's heart, um, since she fought up in Hartford for us on it, so, uh, thank you for efforts to date. With that in mind, I've heard a lot of chatter coming out of Hartford related to the state coming out with, uh, significantly more, shall I say, interference on local affordable housing issues. Um, how is this process going to take that into consideration, and what do we know about that at this point in time?
Well, e, every, every legislative session, there are a lot of proposals that are bandied about on the, on the issue of affordable housing, um, and so we continue to monitor those. I, I do think that, uh, as we went through this process, uh, six or seven years ago, it's a matter of, if you, if you don't take the steps, to your point earlier, of being proactive, if you don't-
Right.
-take the, the bull by the horns and be proactive, and look at ways you can address this issue to meet the needs of your residents, somebody else is going to figure it out for you, which is the A thirty-G conundrum. So, I, I do, do think it behooves us to, to kind of take the lead here and figure out what works best for Fairfield.
And what are we doing monitoring what's going on at this date? I thought, I, to your point, Mark, yes, in other legislative sessions, there's always been kind of noise and what's going to happen, but I thought at this one, it was particularly pervasive, given that it was coming from, I think even the Speaker of the House, or what have you, and, and said that this was a priority, um, that they, that they look at affordable housing across the state. Am I mistaken in that?
Well, uh, again, I, I think some of the proposals that you're, you're referring to have, have been, uh, um, around before, uh, so it's not the first, uh, hearing of them, they, maybe they're changed a little bit, or maybe they have, uh, more oomph behind them, or more support, uh, legislatively. So I think, first, first and foremost, we continue to work with our legislative delegation up in Hartford to make sure that we're abreast of what's, what's happening there, and make sure that they understand where, where we're coming from. But secondly, I, I think I, I'm part of a number of, uh, professional organizations who, again, their purpose is to monitor those, uh, those legislative proposals, so, um, I, I'll continue to keep this board and the First Select Woman apprised of, of those developments.
Right, okay, I appreciate it, thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Okay, um, if there are no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Um, next item is item eleven, to hear and consider and act upon any other business which shall properly come before this meeting. Uh, does anyone have anything they want to bring up? Or ask about? Okay, we did the, we did the, okay, we did the COVID update at the beginning, um, so if, uh, there's no other items or any, uh, discussion, I, I will ho, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well. Take care.
Take care.